Let's go to a word prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you this day and we thank you for all the opportunity you've given us to work here in the city of Glenwood and work for the city of Glenwood. Help us to do the things that would honor you and honor this town. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Roll call. Kerry Braden.
Jimmy Clark.
Here.
Chris Fuller.
Here.
Alan Moore.
Here.
Okay.
All present.
Approval of May seventeenth minutes. You'll have them in front of you. If you've got any questions? They have started the sidewalk projects up between Broadway and Fourth, Third Street. And if a lot of people are asking, there's going to be retaining walls put on the back of those sidewalks and/or the rocks will be replaced. They have not got that part finished because they're in the middle of pouring the sidewalks. So, anybody whose rocks are tore out, they'll either have retaining wall put up or the rocks will be put back. Is there any other questions on? The gentleman has put it, the contractor that's doing the culverts on Rock Creek Cut Off has the first set of those culverts in place. And hopefully he starts getting his fill in tomorrow. His backfill in on those tomorrow and then he'll start on the other set. But they're working well on those projects. A sanitary lift station project that will not be with American Rescue Funds. That was voted on before I got on the council and that was to be done out of city. Out of water and sewer money on item eight. And those pumps are both in now, but he does not have all the electrical finished up on it. So he's not through with those. The clarifier is in and running. Clarifier number three at the sewer plant, that $300,000 project or roughly $300,000 is in and working. So we got that project completed this month anyway. So, biggest part of the time's been on confusion on the river. So, we spent lots of man hours on that and didn't get much done. Other than that. But anyway. Any other questions on? The minutes? Salt Creek did a real good job on our paving. If y'all been around to look at our paving project, I think we got as good a paving project as I've ever seen. Hopefully if we get another one's grants next year, we can get that same contractor back because he really did good work.
Make a motion. We accept the presented.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Got two sets?
I do.
Let me stand on top.
I would like you to stand on top of the line, please.
Okay. May financials are not here yet. He will not be done with those till Wednesday. So, we're gonna have to wait till the next meeting on the May financials. The county hasn't got them back to us yet. Y'all want to vote to, they're not here to not do anything with them. So we can't approve them. So, so y'all okay with this? All we can do is pass because the county doesn't have them to us yet.
I'm looking most of the table left.
You have a second? Jimmy Clark seconded. All in favor? Okay. Alan Moore want to be put back on top of the list for his tap questions. We've been putting him at the bottom. He didn't have time for it. Alan, you got floor?
Okay. I'll be brief. What I would like to see the city move to and at the speed that they move to it is totally up to me. In full disclosure, I'm fixing to get two water taps myself. And I will insist on paying the rate that it is right now. If the council were to take actions and that to change it, I'll pay just like it is right now because that's just fair. But, I still want to say that I'd try to get it changed for myself. But I think we would encourage growth in the city limits of Glenwood if we made it to where we done either. There was a couple of ways we could go. One, we could let, make it to where it was a little bit better flat rate. At one point it was 375, then it went up to 650, then it was 750 and then it's bumped up and up. Of course, everything's went up. We all know that inflation and way things are. However, I would like to see us cap if a water access is right in front of a designated piece of property and someone's fixing to dump a lot of money in that property to make something out of it or simply revive an old existing structure that's falling apart, then it needs, I would like to see us cap that at a, something reasonable. I read y'all the numbers from the areas around us at the last couple of meetings. And one of them's like 275 and then the zone, and then the boring is a variable. I would like to see us have zoning, I mean boring as a variable that the city co-ops, like co-op the boring. At what rate? That'd be up for you guys to decide or us guys to decide or us people to decide, in her case. And then make it easy for someone because my theory is if someone buys a cheaper lot, you can buy land all between here and Arkadoffia for peanuts in some cases because it don't have water, don't have electric, don't have sewer, it don't have any of the stuff. You get on a piece of property that has all them services right there in front of it, the fiber optics line and the different things, you're gonna pay more money for that lot and them services. So I think that what we're doing now is we're making the people that maybe go get a loan to buy the higher dollar piece of property, they're having to subsidize the ones that bought a cheap piece of property. And I don't think that it should be that way. I think every person should stand on their own two feet with the city co-opting and being forward leaning on getting people to into our city and to encourage future growth because we make our money over the long haul based on our numbers. We qualify for different grants based on our numbers, our census numbers. If the parents live there, live here, the grandkids have got a good shot of living here and the kids at some point in their life. I think that we could plant the seeds for later growth for Glenwood instead of our water meter base going from roughly a thousand down to 850. And then we look back and all of a sudden it's springing up at Bonnerdale and people are going out that way and the community of Bumblebee starts becoming, you know, a growing hopping area. And it wouldn't take much, guys. It wouldn't take nothing but an Atwoods or a Walmart neighborhood or something like that to create a vacuum to start pulling people out of our city. The whole time they're out there, we're still going to be doing the infrastructure and we're still going to be taking care of, they're still going to be using our city. So I would like to see them in, people in the city limits and I'd like for us to be proactive. If the council can't do anything on that and don't want to do anything on that, I would like to at least let them do a, you know, split it three ways, you know, let them pay a third now, a third in six months and a third later. Worst case scenario, they don't pay for it. So the city winds up getting the lot back at some point or someone else winds up buying the lot that does do something with it, the services will already be there. So it's not like we're necessarily wasting the services and we could recover our expense with the initial third down. So I'd like to see us make it easy. Jimmy, if your daughter wants to move back to town, she finds a lot down here that don't have services readily available. I'd like for her to say, okay, Dad's helping us cook with 300 and we got 300 and 600 bucks, we get it put in. Six months later, we need to be sticking some money back because in six months we're gonna have another big water bill and then we're gonna have another big water bill to get our water sewer to put in. I'd like to see the city work with people to be forward leaning. And I'll yield the floor. Discussion or whatever. Back to the mayor.
What's the tap right now?
1875, I believe.
How much? Eight seventy, 800.
Yeah. What's the breakdown on that? What's the water versus sewer?
1,200 for water, 150 for connect.
Do we know the prices of meter, court stop, curb stop, pipe? Spud? You've got everything?
When BT was sitting behind the desk, Chris, he said it was right at $400 for them items.
Guys, we used to be six, six something. It ain't something anyway. It was, that's.
This would be 625 on a three-way split. It'd be 625. I personally am in favor of doing the, doing the, you know, the one if the services are on your side of the road, it be in one price. And if it's boring, it be a different price and the boring be a variable until the quotes come in on it, you know?
The way we have it right now, does it not average out?
It averages out, but it's averaging out with one person paying more to supplement another person paying less. And in purchasing the real estate, that's taken into account when you purchase, buy and sell real estate.
Right now, what the, if I understood the rate, what they've tried to do is you take all the cost of one short side service and you take all the cost of, the average cost of a long side service, which is gonna have a bore in it and you divide that by two and you split it up. And then it doesn't matter what side of the road you're on, you're paying, everybody's paying equal. And what you're saying is you'd like to see the guy that lives on the side of the road, the water main's on, pay less than the guy who lives on the other side of the road.
Right. Because it's gonna pay less for the.
If you do that right there, you better raise your prices up because your bores right now costing you what?
Well, they drop. You're back down. I mean, that, that, where's Brad at? Brad at? I don't know where he's at. There, why did he charge you for that?
For a short side?
No, for a long, for a bore.
Are we still getting Jaren to do it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, when I talked to Jaren the other day, he said if it's, I mean, there's some bores that may cost you three, four thousand and then there's some bores that may cost you close to 1500.
Depends on the area.
Depends on the area and what you're doing?
Depending on what he's born.
If he's born in rock, it's gonna be a lot worse.
I just, and I, you know, I know.
Some you lose on, some you don't.
I know this is public record and this probably doesn't sound good, but the truth of it is, is I'm tired of the people that work really hard and supplementing the people that don't try so hard. And I think that it should be equal to, we should treat people fair. If they work hard and they spend the 50,000 on the lot because it has these services, they should get the, the, the good things from that instead of supplementing the person that's in the swamp. You know, and I, I just think that, and in worst case scenario, I'm laying out a second option. Make it a three-way split, leave it like it is to where that people can actually move into our city. Or they come up here, they pay 625, they move into our city and then six months, they gotta pay another 625. And, you know, go that route. It's two options, you know, to make it easy for a young couple because hey, you're making 600, 700 dollars a week. You know, after taxes and such, that's a, that's a month's salary to get a water sewer tap. And I just would like to see us be more forward leaning on growth.
I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying I won't, I'd, I'd really have some prices on it relating before I just say.
Well, he's talking about though you'd have maybe an 800 if the water mains on your side of the road and a 2,500 if you live on another side of the road. I don't know what's fair.
I will, I tell you what I think is probably the smartest move to make at this point. And I, this is be the fourth time I've done this. Is I make a motion to table my own agenda item again. And at the next meeting, everyone will have in front of them the prices of the adjacent conjoining cities. And then we can make an educated decision instead of going off of my word, which is proven to not be very good.
I'd rather have prices of what it costs, what the parts and pieces is going to be to put it in. That's what I'd rather have. Yeah. Cause I mean, I don't want to say, well, charge somebody 400 and it cost us 475 to put everything in. See what I mean? That's, that's not making any sense.
So once you get both numbers together, Billy can help me on one. I've got the other numbers. I just don't have copies with them, with me.
Well, Kimsey is doing what Alan's talking about and so is North Pike County. They're penalizing the guy who's on the wrong side of the road for the water main. Kimsey and North Pike County are both doing that. And that's what he's, right now, we try to be equal. The rate tries to be equal. The tap fee tries to be equal no matter what side of the road you're on. Kimsey is not treating their customers that way, nor is North Pike County. So.
Nor is Clark County, which may be what you're talking about.
Kimsey comes all the way into.
I got some land in Cata Valley and it was about 5,000 bore under the state highway.
Yeah, that's, that's, Kimsey goes all the way down here to where your grandma's house is and they got all of Clark County and they're all around us. And then North Pike County, of course, we supply water to North Pike County and then they resell it and they're, they're, they're doing taps like you're saying do. I don't know who you'd be fair to or not fair to because whatever way you do it, you're gonna be, you're gonna be a little bit unfair to one or the other. But I mean, a customer to me is a customer. But whatever y'all want to do is fine with me. You just, we can get you what you're wanting. And that is what all your other, the two other water departments that touch us close are doing. Is they're charging, if you live on the wrong side of the road for the water main, you're paying all the price for the extra tap. And if you're on the side of the water main, that the mains on. So that's just, if y'all want to do it that way, we'd bring it up and y'all can.
Let me table it. Get y'all good information. That'll be in y'all's packets at the next meeting and then y'all can make an educated decision.
Yeah, we can get it together and we'll get to them. That's no problem.
I got, I got a motion on the floor to table it.
You have a second? All in favor?
If I could, if I could get as many yeses to table my, to vote yes, this tables, I'd be doing good.
This right here is not on the agenda. This is the opioid settlement agreement that the state of Arkansas is in. I've been to the meetings in Little Rock at the Miss League meeting. The state is doing a whole lot of work to get your NORCAM shots out to everybody. And if Glenwood wants to get involved in that, we need to get a different group of people than the mayor and the council to get involved with it. Our police department cannot, the NORCAM you're supposed to get is supposed to be coming from this, from the police side. But we can get NORCAM shots for, the city can sit down, if we get a group of people that want to work on it, we can get those shots given to us. If we want to get a group, if there's a group of you people that want to get involved in trying to help the opioid epidemic that's going on, we need to get, we can get a committee and do that. The, the police department, they get their stuff from another, from the state police agency. So for instance, we not supposed to get, if we get the shots to help with it, we could have it at city hall, which I don't know how that'd be any good, but we could put them out. If we want to research that some more. This is a settlement agreement and the state's got millions of dollars going to this. If we want to get involved with it, we can get involved with it as much or as little as we want. If y'all know of a group of people that would like to get involved in that, it's a very good thing. But it needs to be somebody other than the immediate council. And the police department can't be because they're gonna get help. They're getting help. You got your NORCAM shots from the county or state yet?
I've got some in there.
Okay. There's some come down and if we need more, if you, if you know anybody that needs them, we've got them in the police department today.
But there has to be training. There has to be.
There has to be training on it. If we get somebody trained, if we want to do this, to have classes and train you on it and we get, the shots right now are not going to cost you anything. The state bought, I've got, how many hundred thousand? There's shots that they're giving. But we can get involved in that if somebody in the community wants to get involved in that. I can get us in touch with the right people and there's, Pike County is involved in it. Glenwood's just not. There's some people, I guess some people in Murkisboro are in that group already. And, but we don't have anybody working on it in Glenwood right now. That's just food for thought, nothing to vote on. Okay? Ryan, you're next.
All right. So I actually got some good news. This is really close to my heart. As a retired police officer, as I've been sitting up here, learning things about our city, it's kind of hurt my feelings a little bit how the police department is issued equipment and lack thereof issued of equipment. Had an idea in my mind that I was gonna ask a few people for some donations. Those donations were gonna go to vests that we don't have for our officers. We need three vests. It was also gonna go to some guns that we don't have any department issued firearms. Unfortunately, from personal experience, I have been in situations where I've had to use my gun. They take your gun. It's a, it's a big mess. If it's a department issued gun, they issue you a new one after you go through the psyche valve and the training and stuff like that. Anyways, there's a lot of things that aren't being done, what I feel, properly. So, I had an idea in mind to ask a few people for a small donation. And with that small donation, I was just gonna keep building it up until I got enough money. I reached out to one couple and they are constantly helping out this city. They're constantly helping out people in this city. And they offered to pay the whole amount. So, Karen and Johnny Cox, if you'd like to come up here, please. They've offered to give the city a check for $8,000. That check is gonna go to the police department for, Chief, you'd like to come up here, please? For vests, five guns, holsters, lights and equipment for the guns. So.
Y'all take a picture with them?
If you'd like to accept this check from me, I'd appreciate that. That's for the police department. I really appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
We appreciate you.
We very, very much appreciate the cocktails. We thank y'all immensely for helping the city. We appreciate you. All right. Next thing on the list. There's been a lot of talk on the, of coli going in the river and all of that stuff. And I'm just gonna make some bullet points on the facts and where it is. The first thing we know is somebody, some local citizen called and turned the city in. ADQ took the citizens, the next thing we know is ADQ took the citizens' word without ever coming down here and looking. They rolled us up, sent a news story to channel KATV, whichever one it was, and they all run with it. And ADQ had never been down here to look. So the city of Glenwood was blamed for all this stuff with nobody looking to see if the city of Glenwood had anything to do wrong. The city of Glenwood jumped and did all the hurdles we could do to work on this. We were, I've also had a lot of people saying that the city of Glenwood, if you look in y'all's package, y'all've got one page. This, here is, here is the, what we operate on in the sewer plant, on our sewer permit right now. It's about 75 pages. I did not print y'all that. Y'all have the one page that shows you that the city of Glenwood is allowed to use the pond for overflow. And it's, it's in our permit. And ADQ is gonna come back and say, well, y'all put it in the wrong spot in the permit. We're trying to get the city of Glenwood right now because they don't want mud on their face. So we're gonna write you up for it and then y'all can argue about it that's in the permit. People, it's right there in the permit. So the city of Glenwood has done nothing wrong in using that pond. Okay? It won't be in the permit next year. They're gonna take it away from us and the city of Glenwood is gonna get to spend. And if we don't get a grant, we don't have a grant application for that. It'll be somewhere between 500,000 and a million bucks and that's gonna hit the rates. And there's nothing we can do about it now. We're done too far into it. ADQ asked the city to drain the pond. It's done. There's no water, what waters in that pond now is rainwater. The highest of coli that was found in all the testing done is upstream from the pond. It's somewhere between First and Fifth Street. And we cannot find the source. Okay? On 530th, on 530th, Arkansas real water come down and we smoke tested the mains from First to Fifth Street to see if the city could find a leak. Nothing was found. In all this work, we've also seen that if you look at the river flow that they're all talking about on the flow of the river and everybody using the river, if you look at the flow at Cata Gap where the flow is at, anything above five and a half feet, the coli starts coming up in the river. Got nothing to do with the city's pond. I'm not saying the city don't have some leakage in the pond. We don't know that for a fact. They're gonna blame us for it. So we're gonna take the blame for it and we're gonna deal with that however we are. But in what we've found, you got runoff water. This is cattle country. This is chicken farm country. When it rains and you got runoff, you're gonna get some coli in the river. Okay? Here's another thing you're gonna like. What did they tell us was the acceptable level of a coli in the river for safe swimming?
Anything under 100 wasn't.
125. Guess what? The city's discharge permit at the sewer plant is for a coli that we're legal at. 125. We can leave with a coli with our permit from ADQ. They want us leaving with a coli at 125 instead of any chlorine. We're legal leaving the sewer plant with 125. But you're not supposed to get in the river with a coli at 125. But our permit is 125. The city of Glenwood did all the testing and monitoring till everything got cleared. We are not going to test anymore unless ADQ comes down and does something on their own. Facebook and the canoe companies were all notified as well as the newspapers of all the readings ever, every time we got them in. So it wasn't like we were hiding anything. The city has applied for $4 million grant to do work on fixing our infiltration. Whether we'll get it or not, we don't know. If you look at what we're working on and the way the sales tax has been presented to redo, we can use the money that's in our surplus for sewer work because it's repair. We cannot do the work at the water plant because it's new work. In the way the bond issues and that money has been collected through the years, the sales tax has a dollar specific amount that can be paid on the note payment. If we redo the note payment, we're gonna be able to make $9 million worth of bond payments in that sales tax with $300,000 left a year for O and M and repair on water or sewer, which we can't do right now. That reason that money's built up, we can't pay on note payments other than a specific dollar amount. May the 31st was the first day ADQ sent anybody to Glenwood to look at what was going on. Not back when they released the report to the health department, when they told the newspaper that we were polluting the river. Nobody ever even come look. And if you look at their report right here, the only day they come down, what I've been saying all along, the turbidity, the day they checked, the highest level it was, was behind the depot at 75.9, 88, or behind the depot was 88.5, 88.4. Down at the pond, when the water was running down, was 75.9. When you get into the river, all these numbers that ADQ sent back are way lower than what the city was getting our lab to test. We are not, we sent a letter to them. We're not gonna do any more testing. We don't know where the leak's coming from. where the leak's coming from, uh, we are gonna be written up on it from the pond because a lady told me, she said, "I'm not gonna do the test up behind the river, behind the depot, because that's not where it is." I said, "You or me can do one test up the stream where the city thinks the leakage is coming from." And she did, and lo and behold, it's eighty-eight point four. These are their numbers, not mine. So, that is the facts of it, and I know everybody's had fun with us on Facebook and trying to destroy us and tear us up, and the pond is empty, it's not gonna, it won't be used anymore. We may wash out the sewer plant on a heavy rain day, we can't handle over seven hundred gallons a minute sewer plant. On a high infiltration day with the rain, we're gonna be putting fifteen hundred gallons a minute in that sewer plant. Guess where it's going? We got no place to hold it, so it's going to the river. And we'll address the problem with ADQ when they come write us up on that at that point in time. On heavy rain days, without using that pond, we can't hold the water to sewer plant. It can't prob, it's a seven hundred gallon a minute sewer plant. If we didn't have the infiltration, wouldn't be a problem. And I have rule water coming down this week, and our next worst spot of infiltration, we got up behind, uh, what used to be the Dollar Store in that area back in there, is where we got some real heavy leakage that we know about, we're gonna camera that, uh, they're gonna come down and look at it and get set up to do that, and we're gonna start working on that area. The other area that we had that was a problem when I got mayor, we got all that, just about got all that problem fixed, we're not, the lift station's not overflowing anymore every time it rains. So, that's the first time in ten years that's happened, but that's all fixed over there, and we're gonna move on to the next area. Uh, so, we are moving, we are moving forward, uh, trying to get, uh, things on the sewer problems fixed, that's not getting our water problems issues fixed, but we're trying to work on the sewer issues.
Hey Billy, where's that? Seventy-five point nine, ten feet from what part?
That's down there by the sewer, where that creek runs down beside the pond. But your highest, if you look at their report, and she wasn't, she refused to take the sample, I finally looked at her, said, "You're gonna humor me, you don't wanna listen to the City of Glenwood, but you're gonna humor me, and you're gonna go take the sample where we think the leaks, where our highest, the E. coli readings are coming from, and it's not from the pond."
By the caboose or whatever?
Well, that's where it was, it's, actually was higher on upstream, we were, we were too high to count, on up at First Street several days. We don't know where it's coming from, we can't find a leak. We've got infiltration in this system, it could be anywhere running out like that, we don't know, we can't find it. But...
But we're not releasing it.
We're not, the sewer pond is completely dry now, so it can't be released. And we're not saying that there wasn't some leakage in the pond, nobody can say to that for sure one way or the other, the side of the pond where they said the leakage is at, that ADQ's so sure it's leaking, is bright red. That's not sewer. I got news for you, bright red leakage and dirt bright red is not sewer. I don't know what it is, but it's not sewer. But anyway, that, that is where we are, as far as we're concerned, we sent a letter to ADQ, and if they get back with us, the city is through testing. Yes, ma'am? You what now? Okay, we'll give you whatever you want.
You ready?
All right. Uh, right now, we're working on a hazardous mitigation grant that, uh, we're working on right now, if y'all know that old bridge on Seventy has been, had some repair work done it and replacing the culverts on, uh, what's the road out there? My mind was blank.
Grant?
Huh?
Is there a grant for him, Ruth?
No, out on, uh, Rock Creek Cut Off, Rock Creek Road.
Did you understand?
They've got two of those, huh?
Did you understand she wanted to talk?
If you were done on that subject?
No, she won't, oh, you wanna talk?
I wanna talk.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to copy, so excuse me.
Okay, no, no.
Comment.
And, and you don't have to respond to this, I, I have it all typed out, 'cause it's in Italian, but, um, and thanks for allowing me to speak. First of all, I want to let the mayor and the council know that what I'm about to say has been a collaborative effort on several concerned citizens about E. coli and the sewage and all this other stuff. Now, let me, let me step aside and say, I read the ADQ slash readings, and they, they do look favorable, and, and so, I'm just going, oh, with that, I'm gonna back up a little bit. So, I did a public document request, and there is a letter from A D H, D Q, I'm just saying D Q. And on May tenth, um, the city did self-report, so basically, it was reported from the city to ADQ that there was a leak, that's what the letter says.
I'm gonna, let me jot down?
Wait, wait, Billy, wait, um, let me finish. And I have a packet with all the information in it that I'll be happy to distribute, but let me finish up. So, thank you for self-reporting that, okay? And it basically was reported to ADQ from the city of unpermitted discharge on May tenth, twenty twenty-three, and I'm not sure who it was, but...
Did any city resident sign that? Did any officer here, person in charge, sign that?
This is from ADQ.
Did anybody sign that?
Billy, I have the documents.
Did anybody from the city sign the document?
Well, there's not, the city's not gonna sign a document that comes from ADQ.
Yes, we, we would have, any of those permits that says, or any of those things that said we had a discharge?
Wait, 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 Billy, timeout, let me speak. Please, let me speak. I have the documents, and I have one for each councilperson, for you, this is just a concerned citizen me doing some research here, okay? So, I'm not sure who it was, but the individual complained of May eleventh, because without those two things, we probably wouldn't be where we're at, and those two things are, the City of Glenwood reported unpermitted discharge to ADQ on the tenth, and we had an individual that reported on the May on May eleventh. And I wanna tell you, E. coli is somewhat a sensitive issue to me, because last September, I had a severe case of E. coli infection, so much so that I had to take around of a month of strong antibiotics. My primary care physician is here in Glenwood, and if needed, I can provide you with my lab reports of the positive E. coli results, and they were off the charts. So, I've reviewed several documents provided from ADQ under the Freedom of Information Act, and after I've spoken, I'll provide a packet if ever once one. The first document that I took a look at is a letter from ADQ to the city. Among other items in the letter, it lists immediate action items. Those immediate action items were to stop unpermitted discharge, a requirement of daily email communication to ADQ, sample locations every three calendar days until the basin is empty, and two consecutive weeks of sample below one twenty-six. By the end of day, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the city was to submit a communication plan to include notification of the public immediately and signage in the affected impacted area. The letter goes on to say that the Arkansas Department of Health provides items regarding information to improve on the signage. By the end of the day, May twenty-fourth, submit a corrective, corrective action plan or cap. So, I also have a copy of a letter from A L Franks response to that, and A L Franks is the engineering firm that represents the city. So, they responded by letter dated May twenty-fifth on behalf of the city. City of Glenwood indicates, uh, that the city notified the public via Facebook of results, and will use that method going forward. To date, the only results that I know is being posted are the more favorable results, and I have that information in the packet. There are several lab results that I accessed through the public document request that were not favorable but yet not posted, that's in the packet. The city also utilizes another unofficial Facebook page whereby there are so many posts that more important posts are lost in the thread. And there are also some other types of Facebook pages varying that say City of Glenwood, so it could be confusing to a visitor that came and wanted to know about conditions. Furthermore, more citizens of Glenwood do not use, utilize Facebook as their source of information or news, in fact, they might not even have a Facebook account at all. There are more citizens than you think that rely on other sources of media such as those used in the original advisory of May twelfth, twenty twenty-three. If the city chooses to utilize Facebook as a mechanism to notify its citizens, and that's what A L Franks offices says to ADQ, that's gonna be their nothing. I am requesting that posts be consistent with the readings, good or not so good, in other words, provide transparency to the citizens through the network. The response from A L Franks regarding the request of ADQ to immediately place signage at the affected area seems to have been disregarded in the response letter from A L Franks to ADQ. In fact, it's not even mentioned. Will signage be enforced? If not, how did the city work around this immediate request from ADQ? A L Franks mentions in the letter that the city doesn't believe that a corrective action plan is required. Has ADQ responded to that? Have they agreed that corrective action plan is not required? The response letter from A L Franks is the last two things available in the ADQ database, and it's probably because the documents haven't yet been scanned and uploaded, because as Mayor Firewood said, that last reading from ADQ was good, it's not on the public doc, uh, site, but I can guarantee you, I will stay on top of this. Thank you.
Okay. All the response that we've done went through the engineer, and ADQ was notified how we were gonna post, and we posted exactly like ADQ, we told ADQ we were gonna do, just like the engineer said. Nothing about signage was ever agreed upon. The City of Glenwood, if you have a spillage report, has to report it. The City of Glenwood refused to do that because we don't know where it's coming from. We did not, ADQ wrote that and signed it and put it in law and said, "Y'all need to sign this," and engineer said, "I'm not gonna get the city to sign it because we don't know where the leak's coming from, the city's not gonna admit to something that it don't have." I know that the ADQ put it in that we did it, but we did not. The city did not agree to that, because the engineer told the city not to agree to that. ADQ did put that in the file, there's no question that they did. But, I mean, all of this is a one-sided thing that ADQ and somebody from here said, and the engineer is working with ADQ. I don't know what the final results are gonna be right now, but, uh, I can guarantee the pond won't ever be used again until you spend a half million, a million dollars, which city's gonna have to do. That's coming. So, with that being said, I don't know what the answer to all of it is, and the reason there's no more response in it from ADQ, when ADQ come down here and looked at it, it wasn't what they had printed. They're trying to figure out how to get the mud off their own face, because all the stuff they've accused the city of doing is not done. I'm not disagreeing with anything that's in their file, and our engineer has not disagreed with anything that's in their file. But our engineer has said the city is not gonna admit to something it hasn't done knowingly. If we don't know we're doing something wrong, we're not gonna admit to ADQ that we're doing something wrong when, when we're not. That would be highly stupid on the city's part, and our engineer has suggested we not do that until we find the source, which we have begged ADQ to come down here and help us do. They're not willing to do it. They will not come down, they come down the one day, and when they find out there's results, they come back, until they figure out another plan that they can come at. They're coming at to the City of Glenwood with a machine gun instead of a double-barrel shotgun, they're gonna try to take us down.
Billy?
Yes?
I would like to make a quick note that Glenwood has not always had, uh, the infrastructure that we have underground right now, and many years ago, and they still exist today, um, septic systems are all over the town in various places. In that particular area where he was talking about, uh, between First and Fifth Street, um, you had the old Vaughn Trailer Park that was there for many years, that no doubt's probably, I would guess, there's a lot of old septic tanks that are there, uh, that when you get a lot of rain, it all runs downhill, you know, maybe it's an issue with something to do with that, uh, could be an issue on, with other people's different things. So, I would like to note that it, on the surface, you think, "Well, it don't really matter where the problem's coming from, it's in the city, Glen, City of Glenwood, and we gotta get it cleaned up." But on the other hand, people don't want you on their property digging up their land if you don't have a right to. So, we have a right to give them access to water and sewer, but some people are using septic tanks. I can name you many places in Glenwood that are still using septic. They can't put in one, but they can use their existing, and they're still using their existing. But anyway, just wanted to make that note.
Okay. We are still working with ADQ, and the City of Glenwood will own up to whatever we've done wrong. But we're not gonna own up to report that they filled out and sent in that our engineer told them absolutely, positively, in no way will me, the engineering firm, nor the City of Glenwood agree to that letter, because we don't know where it's coming from. And we didn't, we have to sign, if we've got an overspill, we have to fill that report and sign it and send it in. That report, if we had agreed upon it, would have been signed by our engineer and would have been signed by the city. And our engineer is telling us at this time, "No, till we find out for sure what's going on, we're not gonna sit out there and admit to the City of Glenwood doing something wrong that we don't know the City of Glenwood's doing something wrong." And I know everybody's having fun accusing us on Facebook and, and whatever else, I know the Health Department, ADQ's accused, Health Department come down here before ADQ did, and he just shook his head, he said, "We're out of this," said, "This shouldn't be." He said, "Somebody's gonna have to prove something," he said, "You gave me enough evidence," and he turned around, and the Health Department walked back to Little Rock, and they didn't come back and do anything. I mean, has there, was there an E. coli in the river? Absolutely. Could some of it have been coming from the pond? It could have been. That's what we told ADQ, we said, "You need to fill out their support," and the city didn't admit to it. We said, "We're not going to, because we don't know for sure what it is or where it's coming from." And we're doing that in the direction of our engineering firm, which is there to protect you, and they're the ones gotta do the answer, not the city. They're gonna, A L Franks, as long as they're the city's engineer, will write the report. That's gonna be what we do to settle this in the end. It's not settled. I mean, a million dollars later, it may be settled, and if that's gonna make everybody, that's where we are today, guys, it's, if it's a million dollars, we're gonna spend a million bucks.
It's too late, the little children and pregnant women already swam to the memorial day.
The water was fine down there those days. But anyway, we couldn't get a test done, three, it takes twenty-four hours to get a test, and on Memorial Day weekend, Wednesday was the last day to get water tested. If you look at the samples coming before that, they were all dropping through the floor, and the samples after that were way below. We were fine, but anyway, we're gonna move on.
My family's been swimming in, we're downstream from the sewer plant.
Hey, when you swim in it, do you shower after you swim in it?
Yes.
Why? Because it's dirty?
Well, I mean, no, just, 'cause they usually get dirty.
If you swim in the lake or anything like that, you normally take a shower after you do that, because no lake water, no river water is, is completely clean.
All right, number seven on our list, uh, we filed for a hazardous mitigation, we're working on a hazardous mitigation grant today that they're completing right now as we're speaking, that was, Karen, what was that, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars roughly?
You know, I can't offhand.
But they're working on getting the culverts out there, put in, and the bridge repaired. This is another one of those grants, and we didn't have time to get everything filled out like we wanted, so this is just some culverts here in town, uh, and that's what we've applied for, nineteen thousand, uh, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, so that is a grant we have applied for, do not know that we're gonna get. Uh, if we do another one of those, we'll get the First Street Bridge, uh, Third Street Bridge, Fourth Street Bridge replaced, but we'll have to get the engineer to do that. We could do this without an engineer, we didn't have it, less than two weeks, we found out about to get the application in. So, that's applied for, nothing to vote on, if we get it, y'all will do, it's a seventy, seventy-five twenty, but our in-kind labor, we'll put the, if we get the culprit, if we get this granted, the culverts, the city crew can replace, so we're fine on the seventy-five twenty-five, we won't bet out any money other than the city's labor to put the culverts in. Any other questions on that? Okay? The next thing you have there is the first payment on the Rock Creek Seventy Bridge, the other mitigation grant. If you look at that, that's, that was a two hundred and... If you look at that, that's, that was a $290,000 contract altogether. Of which about 260 of it, I think, was grant, wasn't it? I'd have to go back and look, I may be off. Huh? Yeah, so, but this is what we're working on now, and that's the first, this is the first set of payments on it. Nothing unexpected, I'm just showing you what the, where they are in the payments. Okay? Do you have any questions on that? Okay. Next thing, G3 excavation is a contractor that was a low bid on the First Street project, and he's got all of his paperwork straightened up now, correct Karen?
Yes, correct.
So it's $176,065 to do the First Street Water Project. You've got the approval from the Health Department, so I was just giving you that for information. We'll have a letter to proceed from the engineer, and we'll have a public, we'll have a meeting on that, usually the council, if y'all want to come to that, you're welcome to come to it, but you do not have to come to it.
Are you talking about the free construction conference?
Yes, on the, on First Street.
Yeah, I need to be at that.
Okay. Brenda, let me remind, make sure when I get that set up. I do not know what day that is yet, it's not been set.
Billy, one quick question. It says the owner considers the bid submitted to you for the above described work in its response to advertising for bids dated May 9th, 2023. And it said if you fail to execute said agreement and defurner said bonds within 10 days from the date of this notice, are we still within the time?
His bond, the engineer make that work because they were waiting on his approval.
That's what I expect to hear.
He had his paperwork, he just didn't.
I just want it to be publicly noted.
Yep. Okay. Okay. The next thing, Lear Painting. The council that was here in the last four years, y'all had a bid done from a company on doing tank work, and our engineer says he's got to, we can't get tank work done without going through the city's engineer. This guy doesn't work, that did that, doesn't work with the city engineer, he didn't do anything. What they're proposing today, Lear has looked at our project, and what Lear wants to do is come down and do what they call a washdown inspection. That tank will be out of service, they'll go in and pressure wash the inside of it, clean it up, and then tell you what needs to be done on it to fix it. If you're looking at the prices, those are the prices of all of those, each job, and the tanks will be cleaned while they're during the inspection. The other guy just sent a robot down in there and didn't do anything, and you have a bunch of, Andy looked at the bid, and he said, we're not doing some of this stuff. You're not going to spend $100,000 on redoing these tanks that there's nothing wrong with. But the Health Department, while they were down here the other day, and I thought this was awful nice of them, he said, you going to get me my tank inspections before we do our report? I said, yes, sir, I know we got to do them. And he said, I'm not going to write you up on it, he said, get my inspections done. So he got his first report on getting his sanitary survey done, it's not even mentioned in it. Karen says, you must really sweet talk that guy. But anyway, he said, if y'all get it done and get me this down that you're doing it, I will be happy. I would like for y'all, it's $15,000. The one job that we cannot do the way it's bid, so it'll be cheaper, the clear well.
You can't wash that out.
We can't wash that out, we can't shut that tank down because we only have one clear well, so they'll actually do a visual inspection on that and see if there's anything.
I might get motion, we accept that bid.
$15,950. Lear Painting will come and do all that, and then from that, the engineer will tell us what we've got to do if there's any work got to be done to tanks. They were saying all these tanks got to redo, painting, the engineer said, you're supposed to have a 15 to 25 year life cycle on that paint, and your tank's not near that old since it been done last, but you do have, the state is making you do the inspection on them, so.
Got a motion on forward, accept the.
Alan, do I have a second?
Are we going to redo this, where it doesn't say clear well washout?
He'll just reduce the price, that's what Andy said. Karen said, go ahead and do it this way, and if he does the walk-in, he won't be the $3,000, he'll be whatever it is less.
So how's he going to do it?
Camer. It will be camered, a robot camera will go through the clear well. And then if they have to do anything, they'll send divers back in to, if there's anything more got to be done.
Well, let me change my motion to make a motion, we accept a contingent upon a price that's suitable on the robot stall.
It will be cheaper than the $3,000.
Yeah.
The rest of them will prob, if he could do two tanks at a time, if you read down through there, you do it cheaper, we can't take two. These tanks are going to have to be out of service because you're going to have to pressure wash them, fill them back up, sanitize them, do state tests for three days before you put them back in service. We can't do without, we got to have a tank on one at a time while we can take out of service.
We're going to get some good water from another place and put it in our tanks?
No, it's our water, but anyway. All right. Do I have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second it.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. If y'all want to look at that, your April DMR is on the report. We will be rolled up from ADQ quite a bit on the sewer plant, they're more, they're more concerned about the sewer plant. We haven't been keeping a log at the sewer plant like on our instrumentation equipment. All the HOC equipment is turned back on, it's not all calibrated right, but we do have all the HOC equipment back on, monitoring at the sewer plant now. We'll be rolled up on not having all our paperwork cut. That's one of the things, we will be rolled up on DMR, on ADQ from, they're going to write us up on more stuff at the sewer plant during all this deal than they are at the sewer pond. But it's daily operation stuff that we're correcting, so that's not really, that don't really bother me, we're going to get all that in order, it's just taking a while. Okay. As many of you know, we've got a lot of leaks in our water system. If you look at in-depth, the equipment that's showing there, this will give everything, in, in all the talking we've done, we don't think we've got any major leaks in the system. Rural Water thinks that, and North Bay County just went through this, they had 27 service lines leaking, which was a 35% leakage that they got stopped, and it wasn't coming on top of the ground. Rural Water suggests that we buy this equipment, it'll be $13,523, and they will come and train us on how to use the equipment. They will probably be here one day this week and start doing some training with their equipment because we're buying the, we're buying the same equipment that Rural Water uses, and they're going to train us on how to do it. And they think till we get all 1,500 meters out there, check for leaks back to the main and get those fixed, that's where we need to start on our leak detection. They've come down and did, we've worked on it several nights, and we're not finding any major leaks, it's all going to be, they think it's all going to be little leaks, but a bunch of little leaks. And this is their, this is Rural Water suggestion, and this is the equipment. Now then, there'll be some, if you want to get into this bigger later on, everything we're buying here, you can buy the next pieces of equipment so you can start putting it from valve to valve and check for leaks herself. I'm not saying buy that right now because that's about, what, Brad, another $25,000 to get all that in. We're not going to tackle that this year, we can't, we don't have enough people to get that far. If we can get all of our service lines checked and get those fixed, that's my suggestion on working on water leaks right now, is to get all the service line leaks fixed first. And that's what Rural Water, they've come down and worked with us, that guy worked with us on that, what, three days? And he studied our system, and this is Rural Water suggestion of what we do, and buy this equipment, and then the city crews will look for leaks, and we find two or three leaks, my suggestion is we quit looking for leaks, get those two or three fixed, and then work on finding two or three more. I'm not worried about finding 100 leaks and then go back and try to fix 100 leaks, I want to find, to me, if we find two leaks today, let's go fix those two leaks before we find two more, but.
Billy.
Yes.
Can we get some kind of extended warranty with this thing? Because there's about, there's about 12 moving parts on this thing.
Get two years.
Is it a year?
Two. Two parts of labor comes with this one side.
It'd be very interesting getting a longer warranty if we could purchase that.
We can, look at that, I do not know.
How big is this stuff?
It's not big. Did you look at what Rural Water has?
See that orange case?
Here's just a question.
I just question, $250 a ship of rootcase?
It's about, it's about probably 36 inches long, 18 inches wide, about four inches deep, with all that equipment set in.
It's, the listening device itself is about the same as a locator one, about the length, whatever, and stick it through it, and it's got, it's got a ton of different pieces that go through it. That's why you use the case.
No, I was just questioning. 250 bucks to come from Stafford, Texas.
What, is this insured or something?
Well, you could drive to Stafford, Texas, it'd probably cost you more than 250 bucks to pick it up. Oh, you should pray.
This, this is my suggestion on working, starting to work on water leaks, guys.
I'd love to see this kid about a five-year warranty on.
We'll check and see if we can buy extended warranty, it'll be extra, but I'm sure we can buy, see what, we didn't check on it, it come with two years, right?
My phone cords last about 90 days.
Yeah, it says two.
I got a tickle, the HOC rep come down last, while I was on vacation and talked to us, and he said, is city going to get the HOC equipment working at the sewer? Could we, would y'all like to deal away with that contract? Y'all paid maintenance for four years and turned the equipment off. We told him we was getting it turned back on, so he's been down and working with us one day already on the deck.
So they're going to come train us too, these people?
Rural Water will come train us at no charge.
This one says it's coming onsite training and warranty, two years parts with your quote.
We will get some training from him, but Rural Water's going to come down and make sure, there's a little more to this than just a 30-minute training process. They'll come down, make sure all the equipment's working properly, and then Rural Water's going to come back and, and train us on exactly how to run it. And it's nice we got Rural Water to help us because Rural Water's, they'll be down this week to help on that and sewer, both. Any questions? We went totally off the recommendation of equipment from Rural Water. We did not go looking anywhere else. This is what Rural Water's using, and it's what Rural Water will train you on. And we can't find the leaks if we don't have it.
They give us a loaner too.
Huh?
Says they will provide a loaner anytime your equipment needs repaired, either in or out of warranty.
I might make a motion to move forward on this myself.
Have a second? All in favor? Okay. JAG grant. Since the last meeting, we found out real quick, we had missed the time file for the JAG grant, we have gotten them to let us apply for the JAG grant, so without you guys' approval, we filled out the JAG grant and got the money to buy two radios, which we don't have, $3,435. So we're going to buy two radios for the officers, we got three now, but we're going to have, county has one home, and we're going to buy, this grant will buy two radios for the officers, so we'll have radios, two new radios. I don't guess y'all got your feelings hurt about doing a grant, do you? You want to vote on that? It's, it's accepted, unless y'all tell me not to get it, I'm getting them.
Everybody move forward?
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion second, move forward, JAG grant.
Did we, have we got?
All in favor?
Have we got anything from the county yet as far as vests or whatever we're supposed to get?
Well, we're getting, no, none of them.
Does that fall through? They're getting with it. Okay, I got you.
We're getting the vests, guns.
They did send some loaners that were.
Tasers are ordered.
They have to be fitted for those.
The tasers are ordered.
Yes, yes, they're coming out.
The tasers are ordered.
Y'all just wait to measure.
We're waiting on them to come in, they're already ordered, so.
Thank you.
We got two of everything.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now the next thing, no payment on RDOT. This is something the city had agreed to do, it's a 10-year no interest loan for the water line that went, water and sewer that y'all put in out. Is this water and sewer, Brenda, this is water, this, this is water and sewer. And this is what we're going to get grant money back on that we have not got yet. All the paperwork has now been filled out on that and sent in, that's, we're getting $185,000 on that, and that will go on the tail end of the loan. But, so we need to make the $41,000 payment this year, and I need y'all to vote on, that's something y'all have already agreed on, but I still want you to vote on the payment. That is a payment you agreed on with no interest, it's 10 years.
10 years, yeah.
And now then, you won't have 10 years because whatever that 186 that we're getting a grant for will go on the tail end of this, and so it'll be shortened by, what, four years? But this is no interest, it's the first of the payment that is due to RDOT. Sir?
The loan from RDOT.
This is a loan from RDOT. This is your first payment. Now I have a motion to make the payment of $41,514.22.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
It'd be nice if they was charging us high interest so we can make money paying it off early.
It'd be nice.
Billy, this right here, just a quick note, is kind of what I was thinking on the water meters. They spreading it out over a 10-year period for us, and I'd like to see us do it for our citizens over a three, three, three wags or something to help.
Did you give us, where is the lease of purchase agreement's in here? Did you tell me who's going to get in here? They're not in here. We don't need to vote on the lease of purchase agreement tonight, she's got a copy of them. We'll get you a copy of it on the real estate that we agreed to sell out there. The lawyer got us that, he is still, he's not here tonight, he's supposed to be here tonight, we do not have the employee manual here tonight. We do have the lease of purchase agreement, but y'all need to take it home and read it and see if you want to make any changes to it, okay?
That's on the.
On the land that you're selling out there for the, by the park. We've got that, she's, the copy of that's supposed to be in the package now, we forgot to get it in there, so she's getting it. Okay. Uniforms has been discussed since a year and a half, or a full year at least, and we keep bouncing it. You got the paperwork in front of you again, so I don't know what you want to do, but y'all need to make up your mind. You probably need to refresh them because you've been, this was going on before I got in as mayor. Bridget, you may know some of the discussion that was done on it. I'm, I'm kind of, this was kind of before my time, and y'all agreed to do something on it, and we still haven't done anything, so. Brett, why don't you give your suggestion to the council of what you think?
One time we had UniFirst, before I, before I came here, we had UniFirst. But when BT came in, they slacked off and wouldn't pick up uniforms like they're supposed to, so we got rid of them. Went a while after that, BT purchased to buy uniforms from Amazon, and we had uniforms for a little bit, but the people coming and going, it come and going, it kind of faded off, we quit buying them. We had quotes from UniFirst, Sentos, and then we've got some clothes, just straight up buying them from fathers, I think, in your list, and some other ones I found online. It's just however y'all want to do it, but Sentos will do, they'll provide the uniforms and wash them, or they won't wash them, however y'all want to do it, or we just buy uniforms straight out and give them to the employees.
So these. Like this 4554, what is that? Is that a week? Is that? I mean, it's kind of hard for me to read, I don't understand it, because I mean, it's showing, so like, what is that cost? Is that what it says here, everything?
Yes.
Now that's per employee? Or total?
Total.
Okay. And this is?
For a week?
For a week? The 10116 is per employee?
No.
The 45?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
I think they're here for employee.
That's per, that's per the whole bunch.
No.
No, that is, no, that's all of them.
I used to get these uniforms on a. Look here, see, look here. That's not confused, it says nine employees with 11 sets each is 4554. It's 10116 per employee a month, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Bridget, do you remember any numbers?
I don't remember the numbers, but as a citizen, I didn't have any uniforms, because if they all show up, the city's a god, and whatever comes in, I would not be comfortable with it. And we had... They looked professional, had on City of Loomwood, had their names. That's why I was for it.
I bought vests at one time when the city was going on, with the way, the work we do, you're gonna constantly buy vests.
So it's even gonna cost you ten thousand dollars a year?
I know one thing on your, your, OSHA guy, the city employees are supposed to be wearing their marked shirts. Not, not worry about a blue shirt with City of Loomwood, they gotta have the collector and all that on. And they're not supposed to be working out of the truck without that on. Either that and/or a vest.
You can buy those shirts that meet those standards without having to worry about a vest.
Yeah, the shirt's fine, you could, I'd be simpler, I think, on the guys, not to have to wear a shirt and a vest.
Right, and I don't know why we're including work pants in this as well, I mean, you don't go to many jobs or cities that they're gonna employ you and give you an entire outfit, you know?
I'm with you, I would like to see us get some nice shirts.
Nice shirts.
Pants.
A week for everybody.
That's the main thing to get you a pair.
Well, I get that, but like, when every construction job he ever worked, nobody said, "Okay, you get the job and guess what? I'm gonna give you clothes, I'm gonna give you this." No, they said, "This is the list of stuff you have to buy to start your job."
Random waters, waters are allowed, some police close a year per officer.
No. We're not in...
So in the police department, we're paying three hundred dollars a quarter for their uniforms.
No.
Right? And we're, and so in the other departments, you're looking at doing something. But to put the number in perspective, you're giving three hundred dollars, and they get to buy what they want, right? The uniforms.
That's gonna change, it should be a policy and a uniform.
Yes.
That may need to be, but right now, it's not been.
But that's gonna be addressed.
But we're doing, we do have a uniform allowance for the police department at three hundred dollars a quarter, so it's a hundred dollars a month.
And I, I agree, I think we should have some type of shirt for all of our city employees. I just don't think we need to have a full outfit.
Me either. I'm with you on that, I do think that what, regardless of how we go, our employees, I mean, you live, we live in an age of all kinda crazy stuff going on. And it's sure reassured when you see someone standing at your door and it says UPS on their uniform, or FedEx, or something, you know? So, uh, it'd be nice that whatever we do, that it's logoed at least a minimum amount, in my opinion.
The thing that I have seen when I was on the council, and we were, actually when I was there, we were renting y'all pants, shirts, and everything, right?
Yeah, we had a full outfit.
And, but nobody wanted to send them to cleaners to get them clean, or to the laundry to get them cleaned. They was washing at home, 'cause of, so. My suggestion would be to buy whatever you're gonna buy and just outright buy it, and buy them so much a year, just like you're doing the police, rather than paying, your laundry service on this stuff is expensive. And most of them don't, explain you've had, did you have any, have y'all had any laundry service that y'all were, y'all never have had that? The city used to have that.
Could we have minimum required that they be no-go?
You could, you didn't know...
I would not give them a minimum, yeah, yeah.
We were doing shop towels when I first started.
I bet you looked awful on shop towels.
Do we have a policy, uh, do we have a city policy on how they're supposed to dress by any chance?
No.
No.
So, you can wear whatever type of...
Labor, labor boards, requirements, glass, green pants, uh, covered shoes, uh, your basic PPE stuff.
Well, part of this is to look, you know, professional, respectful, and everything else like that. I mean, that's the side of getting the pants and all that stuff is in order to be uniform.
We keep it as a uniform.
Right, I mean, that's what I'm saying, that's part of it, but the...
We don't do something, we at least need to give them a license for a tenure out now. Once you, once you hit one of them weeks where you have four water leaks in a week, you've got at least two or three pairs of jeans that are gone.
But then there has to be a policy, is what I'm saying.
I understand that.
Because if a guy wears ripped pants, you know?
No, I understand that.
Doesn't look good, but then we also, I don't know.
I was gonna say, look here, this one, I mean...
Sentos one looks...
This one, yeah, this one's eleven pants, eleven shirts, and two jackets, ten dollars and eighty cents a week. I get, I get six pants, I get six shirts, and I pay fourteen dollars a week. I mean, ten dollars and eighty cents is nothing, if you trash it or ruin it, you get a new one. That's, I mean...
And they might even do it cheaper if we don't do the pants, but we gotta give them the option either way.
I mean, we paid it, we paid it, I already paid that.
Y'all pay for that, but the company does it.
No, yeah, we have to buy, yeah, it's a part of your requirement, you gotta work on it. I mean, my eyes, that's just me speaking, I'll pay ten dollars and eighty cents a week to rip a pair of jeans every day, instead of going buying a sixty-dollar pair of jeans every time I die. That's just me.
Yeah.
Shirt, pants, you rip it, you just send it in, you get a new one. To me, that's worth forty ducks a month. 'Cause I can't go buy a jeans for my size for a month. I'm sorry.
That's if you buy the yard, don't they?
Yeah. That's just my opinion, y'all, I mean, if my company said, "Hey, you gotta pay ten dollars and eighty cents a week," I'm gonna say, "We're not signing a favor."
What is your wishes? Do y'all want, do y'all want to buy outright, or do you want to go through a service?
I prefer a service.
For another, yeah, for hardly anything more a year, you're getting it taken care of.
And that way an employee leaves, you just cancel that contract, you're not out nothing to them. If we buy, I'm not picking on you, y'all, if we buy a joss a whole set outfit, he quits tomorrow, that's his clothes. We ain't gonna get them back.
So as I'm saying, at whose expense? Are we gonna do like the three hundred dollar uniform?
I say...
Type of allowance per quarter, or...
That's something, I say employees pay it, that's just me, I'm sorry. I do it. Just my opinion, y'all have to pay it.
I've had to buy tools and all sorts of stuff.
It's ten dollars and eighty cents. If that's a true number.
Three hundred dollars a, a hundred dollars a month would be basically a twenty-five dollar a week allowance.
I know it ain't popular, but I say the employees buy that, at least on the, not the cop side, they're already squeezed to the max, but on the other side, employees pay for that. If it's ten dollars a week, you know, that's, that's very cheap. Maybe the, I will say this, if they're paying for it, they will utilize it more, that is a proven fact in business. If you're paying for something, you're gonna try to get your money's worth.
I promise you, they spend that at the gas station every day.
Yeah.
It's just my, that's my, that's my...
Somebody put a motion on the floor. I can't make it.
I might get a motion.
What, what motion are you making?
I'm making a motion that we go with the cheaper thing that Jimmy's talking about. And that if the city wants to co-op it with them, that's fine with me, we, you know, or something, that's fine. But, uh, that it's at the employees' expense, and if the employees, if we wanna reimburse employees at some point, we can do that, I guess. But I'm making a motion that it's at the employees' expense, that we'll take the cheaper option, and they will be uniform, and it's not too much to ask for someone to show up presentable to a job site.
And I, I mean, I can't, this, read this again, I mean, look at it, it says, "Nine employees slash price per employee per week is ten dollars and eighty cents, which the weekly total is ninety-seven twenty." That's what it'd be, the bill would be, but each employee pays ten eighty. And that says eleven shirts, Carhartt shirts, eleven Carhartt pants, and two jackets for the winner. So I mean, if that quote's too good, that's pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion on the floor? I would hope you come back and put some allowance for fired in there, but have a motion on the floor to get that uniform. Have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Would y'all please put them an allowance for clothing in there?
Well, so I think that there needs to be a second motion. There has to be some sort of dress code to make them want to do that, you know? 'Cause right now, what's the dress code? You don't have one. They can wear whatever they want, so how are we gonna say, "You guys need to pay for this," when there's not even a dress code saying what they have to wear? So why would they pay for this if we don't even have a code in our city saying, "This is what we expect you to look like"? I think we need to have a policy written.
You look at it, ninety dollars a week.
For everybody.
Nine dollars, times fifty-two is what. I got that, I mean, ninety...
Okay, I'll make a motion that we do the same thing, and hopefully everyone participates voluntarily, and the city co-ops half of it. I add that fifty percent motion in there.
So what, the three hundred a quarter for the police?
So worst-case scenario, it costs the city fifty dollars a month.
That's what we're paying.
Do the same thing for the other employees, and how does that figure out what their...
I would, thank you, Chris, I mean, that's up to y'all, but I would think, you're not doing anything more for one department or the other if you do three hundred dollars. Basically, it's a hundred dollars a month, and that's gonna come close to covering it, woman.
Yeah, it says ninety-seven twenty.
Difference is, you got some city employees on one side making nearly fifty thousand a year, and you got employees on the other side making six hundred dollars a week. So it is, and percentage-wise of their...
Well, you got some employee, you got some employees on the water and sewer side that's not making minimum wage too.
Right, but they...
We've got, I mean, it's a hard scale on the other side, because you got some, you got some employees that's making fairly good money, you got some minimum wage employees. Some wage employee, he sure ain't gonna be able to afford to pay...
Then we meet him, or we pay it?
Be three hundred dollars like you're doing in the police. That'd be a bad deal?
I would draw my motion, somebody come up with an ocean and fly.
It's only gonna cost them forty and forty, it'll cost us forty a month.
Oh, we disagree.
We've really been wrestling with this too long, though.
Ninety, ninety dollars times, it's only three hundred and sixty dollars a week for all of them, a month.
A month.
I suppose you should do it.
Don't ask me, 'cause I work here, I know how rough it is.
It's cheaper with, without washing.
I tell ya, from my experience, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want them washing them, because they stick everybody in one bundle, and if you've been rolling in grease, these will smell like grease tomorrow too, so...
I don't, I think that price is with washing, so I think it's cheaper with that.
So what if you, okay, if you're saying that, what if you make a motion to pay for the uniforms?
Yeah, right here.
And the city, and get, find out how much cheaper it is not to get them washed, let the city, let the employees wash them themselves, and the city pay the cost of that?
That's for all of them.
Okay.
Can y'all do that?
I'm gonna make a motion, if they get a fly.
Will that fly?
It's been on the agenda for like twenty years now, it seems like.
Okay, so the city's gonna pay the cost of the uniforms for the employees minus the washing. Is that your motion?
Say it again.
That's the motion.
The city's gonna pay for the cost of the employees' uniforms minus the laundry. The city employees are gonna do their own laundry.
As long as they have that, also make sure, as long as they have that, if it rips or tears, they get it covered.
That's, that's part of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay?
But the only thing I would like to add to that is, we want them to participate. However, if they sign up to participate, at that point, they are required to participate.
Well, you'd be, if you're paying for them, they're gonna have to participate.
That's correct. Right, I'm just saying, yeah, right.
If you don't come to work dressed, then you've got them up.
Yeah.
Okay, y'all got a motion and a second? Who seconded it?
Nobody's seconded it yet.
You have a second?
What was it?
That you pay for the cost of the uniforms minus the washing, and the city pays for all of it.
It doesn't exceed the three hundred dollars that we do for that.
Well, it won't do that from what you're showing in that deal. It wouldn't exceed that if you did the laundry.
No, this quote is, uh, with, I think this is the laundry Brent's talking about, it's an extra twenty-two dollars? And with the washing, it says on the next page, I didn't read it, one twenty fifteen, that's for nine employees. You take off twenty-two ninety-five, gonna be under.
That's gonna be ninety-nine, okay.
Yeah.
So it's...
If it's a correct quote.
It should be.
Yeah, this is very difficult for my position. If we can get a clear, uh, motion, that I can write down, I would appreciate it.
Well, I'm so mixed up while ago. I'm so mixed up while ago, I seconded it my own way.
Why don't we, can Brent, can you get us a, call tomorrow and get us a, whoever, get us a price?
Well, that should be a good price, and we just...
It's a year old.
From what I understand, there's not, there shouldn't be any increases, they don't increase it ever so long.
Okay, if I understood the motion, so Ryan, y'all tell me if I'm wrong in what y'all were saying. The city's agreeing to buy the uniforms minus the cost of washing for the employees other than the police department, and they'll get their three hundred dollar allowance, just like they're always doing. But we'll buy the other city employees' uniforms minus the cost of washing.
That's correct.
As long as it doesn't exceed the three hundred dollars was added, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Jimmy, I made it, Jimmy seconded it.
Okay, now you got that clear enough now?
Yeah, I made it, Jimmy seconded it, okay, so all in favor, was your question now?
All in favor. Okay.
Dress, did you say?
I'm staying out of it on this one.
Okay.
I have a three to one, thank you.
All right. Now then, water loss report. Been busy and I haven't got it, tell you. There's your six months. There is some of the May number there, when you're up at fifty-one percent, uh, and April number there, at fifty-three percent, we did some big blowdowns. Your January had a thirty-seven percent water loss, February had a forty-nine, March you had a thirty-seven, April fifty-three, May fifty-one. We still have high water loss, we've got some of the leaks fixed. This April and May numbers, and one thing we're not doing, that I've gotta get Brett and them to start doing, if we have a big blowdown or have a big leak, we need to start listing that water, so it doesn't, so we know, it's maybe unsold water, but we know why we're there. Those two months, we both had, we had some big leaks, and we blew down, uh, one day we blew down a half million gallons to clear up a water problem. Now, that'll make your water loss go real quick, but we are working on it, the leaks, I think we're working on it. It looked real good, and it looked better till April and May hit, but we know what those numbers were partially. I do not know what the exact numbers were, 'cause that's just the total numbers of waters produced and put out to plant and water sold. With no fires, no leakage, no, that we know about, or no blowdown of hydrants, uh, that's what those, all those months are all the same representation. That's just food for thought. We've got to get that fixed. Now then, there's nothing to vote on on twenty and twenty-one. That's your payments of your bills on the two sidewalk projects you've got going. If y'all have any questions on those, I'll be happy to take those discussions right now. But that is your first sets of payments. It is the first payment on the, on the first Broadway to the Tennessee project, it is the first payment. On the other one, you're at third payment on the, that, we covered that up there. I got put in there twice. Those are on the contract, those should be coming in right on the money, because those are all specifically bid jobs, it's specific line, and most of those sidewalk projects don't have any change orders, because they're, they're, they are what they are. And so far, you're running right on target with that. I do have one discussion with you guys, uh, of what we wanna do. The contractor is willing to go through town and repair the buckles in our sidewalks that we got, the busted spots in the sidewalk we got. And he come to me today, I tried to get him to give me a price of going and fixing each thing. He said, "Do you know what that's gonna..." He said, "It's hard for me to figure you a cost to go over here and replace four foot of curb here, and go half a mile and replace eight foot sidewalk." He said, "It would be better to give me an hourly rate for material and labor." He said, "Could I..." He said, "Y'all got a, there's quite a bit to do, and it's not the same any spots." Y'all understand what I'm saying? It's, you got curb gutter gotta replace, you got sidewalk gotta replace in some spots, you got, uh, the walkways, the handicap ramp gotta be put back in in some spots. It's just a whole array of things to get our sidewalks all back up, all over town. How do y'all want me to proceed to talk to him? So I know what, you want me to try to get an exact price, or he would like it to be, for what's done, he'll give you a price for so many feet? He wants to do it by the hour, 'cause he don't really know what he's getting into. I understand what he's saying, but I also, the city needs to know what it's gonna cost, and I don't know how we're gonna get there. So have y'all got any ideas on...
He's scared of the project, he's gonna throw out a really high number, is what I'm thinking, so if we could find an hourly, this is my opinion, but if we could find an hourly that we could live with, that he was comfortable with, I would say do it on the hourly, but the total project not to exceed a certain amount of money is what I would recommend.
Y'all just, anyhow, y'all tell me to go back and talk to him, I will. He's willing to do the work, but he's went and looked at it. We've got, if you go right on, if you look at, most of it's spray painted orange that he's looked at redoing. you look at, most of it's spray painted orange that he's looked at redoing, he's starting to mark it, and he's writing down what it is, and the big boss that he works for is really uneasy with trying to figure out to do that. If he bids it, it's gonna be, I'm sure, high, because he's not gonna lose money on it itself, and he said he'll do it at his rate that he's working for, if that's the way y'all want us to, uh, I will talk to him some more, y'all give me direction on what you want me to do on it, 'cause I did not agree with him on anything. He told me he's gonna give me a price on it, and then I talked to him today, he said his boss wants to do it, uh, for, for time and materials required to do the job. So what is y'all's suggestion of how I go back to him, uh, and I will go back to him and bring it back to you at the next council meeting, he won't be ready to start that before the next council meeting. But we're gonna, to me, we need to get it done while this contractor's in town, and then you get that stuff fixed. We got spots, some spots where the sidewalks buckle a foot in the air, a couple of spots. What, do y'all have any more suggestions, or you want me to, can you talk to him?
I'm not comfortable enough to agree with something, I don't know how much it's gonna cost, I mean, I don't wanna say, okay, we'll, we'll settle for this right here, and it ended up being, costing us an extra eighty thousand dollars on, you know, what we agreed to.
I agree, I, I'd likely have some kinda number.
I'd like to have a not to exceed number, and then an hourly rate that we were comfortable with, based on, you deal with contractors every day.
Okay, a not to exceed number, and then an hourly rate, okay.
Yes, and then with the hourly rate, some type of a third-party verification, in other words, he texts you and says, "I'm gonna have guys working for six hours on such and such project," or turning his time in every week or so, or something, something that would...
Brett is having to fill out their hourly worksheets every day already, so we're, Brett would know, the city, Brett's having to do that right now, we have to do that to get, for him to get paid, the city's, Brett's actually looking at the hours they're working on each, if he's got six guys working on that, that's a list that we have every day already, we could, that would be, that would be an easy part, because we're already doing that. So, y'all want me to proceed?
I make that motion, we proceed under them conditions.
I'll, I'll get it before I come back at the next meeting, okay?